which as part of our annual budget process, the mayor is to call together the school committee and the city council to review the financial condition of the city, talk about revenue and expenditure and forecasts for that, and other relevant information in order to develop a coordinated budget. So tonight, I'm going to try to cover those issues and a few other issues, and then sort of review the budget process timeline that we'll be working under over the next few months toward our goal of getting a completed FY 2015 budget in place for July 1st of 2014. One of the issues that we've talked about over time, and in the last few years I've been emphasizing this, is the state of our reserve funds. So I'm going to begin focusing quickly on the reserve piece because that's where I started in presentations last year. So if we go to the first slide, Mary. This is a history of what's called our undesignated fund balance, or what's called free cash, which is what the state certifies at the end of each fiscal year. This shows you a history from FY 2005 right up to the current FY 2014. We were very pleased this year to have our free cash certified at a little bit over 3 million, 3.2 million. You can see the history of this particular item, including in FY 10, when the state and the nation had a very severe budget situation and our aid was cut mid-year, we actually ended with a negative undesigned fund balance that year, as did many communities across the state. So we've worked very hard, particularly in FY 13 and FY 14, to focus on ensuring that we had a strong undesigned fund balance. This is what we use primarily to both rebuild our other reserve accounts, as well as using it toward our capital improvement program each year. It's been what we've used primarily to then infuse our capital program. Go to the next slide. This is the state of our general fund reserves, our other reserve funds, our stabilization fund, our capital stabilization fund, and then the newly created for FY 14 fiscal stability stabilization fund, which as you know, when we asked the voters to adopt the override, part of that was to then take some of the additional revenue, not use all the revenue, but to put some of it aside. So you can see that we've been working very hard, again, in the last two fiscal years, 13 and 14, to rebuild our reserve accounts. This is very important. You'll see that for FY 14, you can see the current balance of our reserves, and then there's a final line off to the right. That is actually pending a second vote of the city council. Next Thursday, there was unanimous votes on first reading, but after second reading, that will be the status of our various stabilization funds. So you can see that we've been working very hard to rebuild those and to get them back up. Next slide. This is just looking at those stabilization accounts as a percentage of our general fund budget. And so you can see we're following those transfers. Next Thursday, we will be at about 3% of our general fund budget. Our goal is obviously to get up into the 5% to higher range, but this is good progress. You can see again where we were in FY 2011. We were at .34%, which is not where we want to be in our reserve position. Next slide. Why do reserves matter? Obviously, primary reason you have reserves is to be able to respond to emergency situations that occur. A second important reason is our bond rating, which directly correlates to the cost of borrowing for capital projects. It determines the interest rate at which we can borrow funds for the capital projects that support both the city and the schools. And then in the case of our capital improvement program where we use free cash, but we also have a capital stabilization fund that we use specifically for capital-type projects. With regard to our bond rating, we actually had a bond rating call two weeks ago because we were going out to bond on about $2.5 million worth of bond issues. That is in part some bond anticipation notes that we're rolling over. We're also bonding some of our capital improvement projects for both the city as well as the school side. So as part of that process, we met, well, we met over the phone with Moody's Investor Services who reviewed our finances about a year ago. They re-reviewed them in light of this. And then they just this week issued our latest bond rating. You can turn to the next slide. So Moody's Bond Rating Service maintained our current strong rating, which is AA2. So they, after reviewing what we've been able to do, they kept us at our current bond rating. The strengths that they noted in their report, and this report is online, it's on the city website, you can also find it at Moody's. They were, as you can see, focused on our diverse tax base. Our trend of increasing our reserve levels was noted, and the recent approval of the general override to Proposition 2.5 was looked upon as very favorable. Looking at things that could make the rating go up in the future, continued improvement in terms of our financial operations, as well as continued growth in our fund balances. And then again, what could make the rating go down? This is coming right from Moody's, a decline in reserves and obviously a decrease in tax base. And you can see we have a quote from Moody's going forward. "Review of the city's credit strength will heavily weigh its progress towards continuing to improve and maintain balanced operations and increasing reserves to levels equivalent to similarly rated communities." Again, for a community our size, we're doing well to hold on to this AA2 rating, but they've been telling us that we need to, again, rebuild those reserves and get them up to a level so that we can maintain it. Obviously, our goal will be to increase that rating, but we were pleased that we were able to maintain the rating. Go to the next slide. So how do we compare with our neighboring communities in terms of these metrics around our reserve funds? This is certified free cash for FY 2013, which is on the left, and then the next bar, the darker bar, is for 2014. You can see North Hampton sort of in the middle there, where we are. And then you can see neighboring communities, Agawam, West Springfield, Amherst, all the way over to East Long Meadow, East Hampton, and Long Meadow. You can see changes from year to year. In our case, we were able to increase our free cash between 13 and 14. And then you can see the variations. You can go to the next slide. Single-family average value. So this is the value of the average single-family home in the state. The state average is 356,794. Here, you can see the value of North Hampton in blue, 298,669. And then you can compare that with the average values in these neighboring communities. So we have very strong values. Our values continue to remain high. That was one of the things that was noted in our latest bond rating. Next slide. This is the average single-family tax bill for FY 2014. That's the current tax bill that people are getting. The state average tax bill, $5,039. You can see North Hampton, again, is sort of in the middle. $4,597 is our average single-family tax bill. And then you can see the spread on either side. Long Meadow, 7,500, all the way over to Agawam, 3,200. Next slide. This is the residential tax rate itself. This is the per thousand rate. Again, this is the current tax rate, as been certified with DOR. You can see North Hampton, in this case, is on the lower end in terms of our tax rate at $15.39 per thousand. And then you can see the spread all the way over to Long Meadow, which is $23.15 per thousand. So just thinking about those things, obviously, we have, you know, we're strong on the value side. Our rate is low, and that sort of puts us in the middle in terms of the average tax bill that a single-family home is being assessed in North Hampton.
What's the state average?
That's a good question. I don't know, we'll have to find that one out. I'm not sure. Do they post a state average for the?
I don't know.
I don't know. We'll have to find out if they have that, yeah.
Well, and the other problem is some of those communities have a split tax rate.
That's true.
Some of that residential burden has been shifted, so it really is hard to compare.
Yeah.
Especially with like West Springfield.
Exactly.
They're a real couple.
Yeah, yeah. Next slide. So this is just a quick picture of our current revenue structure for the current budget year that we're in. You can actually go to the next slide because it's not as easy to see it. This is an easier way to see it. You can see that we're currently relying on taxes for 63% of our current revenues. State aid is 19.5%. And then you can see the various charges for service, licenses and permits, fines and forfeitures, federal aid, a whopping .39%, and then some miscellaneous revenue. So that's kind of the revenue structure that makes up our current budget. Yes?
Just back to that slide, Mary. Thanks.
Which one?
This one here, the charges for services.
Yep.
So when we look just quickly, I don't want to run out of time. Are those, is that the order in which those are?
It's just a sample. It's a sample of them.
You know, we take a lot in from the parking.
Yes, indeed. And actually, if you go into your budget book under the revenue section, you can actually see each one of them broken out and how much.
It's not in the chart.
Yeah, it's just, we just wanted to give a sampling of what that meant, what a charge for service was. Yeah. Next slide. New growth. This is one of the other important factors that we trend in terms of revenue because in terms of how we grow our base, how we are able to, in addition to the 2.5% that we're allowed to go up each year, new growth is the other factor. So that's any of the new buildings, new businesses, new things that are coming online as of July 1st that we get to add into that calculation. You can see that in 2014, we actually finished with higher-than-expected new growth. We were above what we had initially projected, 716,719. And that was a significant increase over 2013. You can see kind of the historical average of that. For 2015, in discussions with the assessors, we're currently estimating 600,000 in potential new growth. We may refine that as we get a little bit closer to the budget process, but that's what we're looking at. Again, that gets back to the whole issue of economic development and how important it is that we continue to promote that as a way of creating this additional growth in our overall tax base, which supports our revenue. Next slide. This is uncollected taxes. Not only did you spend a whole lot of time on this, but merely to demonstrate that if you look at a percentage of uncollected taxes as a percentage of our net levy, you'll see in FY 2013, it represents 1.15%. So uncollected taxes is not a big issue. We do very well in terms of folks paying their taxes and collecting taxes. Next slide. Hotel motel and meals tax. This is another one of the revenue sources that's particularly important to us locally because we have a local option that we adopted for both hotel motel and meals tax. You can see, actually, the meals tax doesn't start until 2010 because that's when the state gave us the ability to do that. You can see that that's been a very strong revenue source for us. The red is the meals tax. The blue is the hotel motel. Had very strong years in '12 and '13. '14, that was actually our projection, so we don't know what that's going to come in at, but that was the projection that we're using. And you can see, again, those have been important revenue sources for us, obviously, given the number of restaurants that we have in North Hampton. That's an important revenue source. Next slide. Net state aid. Okay, so this is essentially, when we say net state aid, it means we're taking the normal state aid that comes into us. We're minusing the charges that we automatically have to pay, and including some of the things like the School Building Authority money, which comes right through as part of what we're paying off on some of our school buildings, just focusing on what the true net state aid is after those things are taken into account. So you can obviously see the trend. You can see in FY 2008, we got back to the top of the recession roller coaster, and then we went down sharply. You can see that we dipped way down into FY 2012. We've come up. But even the FY 2015 projection that the governor just put out actually represents a slight decrease from last year. This is the governor's projected budget that he just put out. Actually, in terms of net state aid, we're actually getting less in net state aid than we did last year. Go to the next slide. So this is just the chart that we've shown and I've talked about, and talked about it in the paper the other day when we were asked what I thought about the level funding. If we go back to just that top of the roller coaster, 2009, if we had just been level-funded in state aid for those years coming forward, that's about $15 million that that would represent. So, you know, we've had to essentially backfill those losses in state aid as we go forward. And that percentage, the state aid as a percent of our budget has continued to get smaller and smaller each year. So that's why this whole issue of state aid is going to be very important in this budget year because the state is proposing, the governor is proposing to increase overall spending by 4.9%, yet his budget level funds unrestricted local aid and makes some increases in Chapter 70, but clearly not commensurate with the rest of the spending in the budget. Next slide. This is Chapter 70. This is Chapter 70 aid to cities and schools, to both the city schools as well as Smith-Vogue. The blue line is Smith-Vogue. The red line is the North Hampton Public Schools. You can basically see that it's remained fairly flat over time. The FY 2015 projection, this is again in the governor's budget, we would fall into the sort of the minimum aid category that they are projecting, which is an additional, I think, $25 per student, which would basically, under the current cherry sheet, would net us an increase of about $70,000 from what we received in Chapter 70 aid last year. Interestingly, if you look at our minimum contribution line, I mean, we are well above net school spending, but if you look at what the minimum contribution line is for North Hampton Public Schools this year, they're actually raising it by about 900,000, our minimum contribution, and giving us $70,000 more in order to meet that. So the Chapter 70 is going to be another one of the areas that we'll be having to look to the House and Senate if we're going to see changes in what those numbers are going to reflect. Next slide. This is the unrestricted local aid. This is again everything else other than that Chapter 70 money. It used to be lottery and additional assistance. Then they blended it all together and called it UGA, or Unrestricted Government Aid. You can see, again, very flat from '13, '14, and it's definitely flat in '15 because the '15 is the governor's proposed budget. So we're plugging that in right now, at least, as a preliminary revenue number. The Secretary of Administration and Finance, I was at the MMA conference this weekend, and he was taking a lot of incoming about this from municipal officials, and he said, "We're not level-funding it. We're maintaining the increase from last year." That was the rationale that he gave. So good luck with that one. Next slide. These are some other, looking at some other revenue sources. Parking revenues from our parking meters and ambulance revenues. These are revenues that we are relying on to balance the budget, to fund general operating expenses. You can see essentially that, well, the slide sort of tells two things. You can see that we had an uptick in our parking meter receipts from '12 to '13. You may recall that we did a change in our rates that year. We raised many of our parking meter rates that year, so that reflects that uptick. You can also see that our ambulance revenues have started to level off and in fact have slightly decreased from their high-water mark in FY 2012. We're now sort of seeing that system stabilize and level out, no longer providing service to West Hampton, which we had been. So those are a couple of revenue sources that we look at. You can also see from 2009 to 2010, when we went to full-time ambulance, you know, how we really took off in terms of ambulance revenues. So those are one of those revenues that we're always tracking very carefully because they contribute to our general fund budget. Next slide. These are the inter-fund operating transfers. So these are the funds that are paid to the general fund by our three enterprise funds. Sewer in brown, blue for water, and yellow for solid waste. Interesting, you know, this slide sort of shows you a few things. Obviously, the solid waste enterprise fund, you can see, has gotten smaller and smaller and smaller as we've closed the landfill. You can see that in FY 14, it's contributing $97,000 to the general fund. And this year, we project it may even go down slightly more. And you can see other variations in that. But again, this is, you know, one of the things that contributes to the general fund. And again, this is, enterprise funds are specifically to be used for those enterprises, but they are allowed to pay for indirect services that the city provides to support them, such as the billing, the legal, the financial that the city provides. Next slide. This is parking tickets and RMV fines. Again, just showing you some of the trends there. Not a lot of variation in terms of that, but again, it's one of those revenue sources. Next slide. This is our building inspections, building, plumbing, wiring, weights and measures, and permit fees. Again, this is very sensitive to the economy as people are building more, as growth is occurring. You can see 2013, which was a big year for growth. Not surprisingly, the permits that were pulled track that. We saw an increase. 2014, that's what we have projected for 2014. We're thinking it's going to come in pretty close to that, and we're going to be working with the building commissioner to figure out what our estimates are going to be to use for that revenue for 2015. Next. Investment income. Again, this is another one of those revenue sources that have gone down over time because of the low-interest rate environment. You can see where we are in 2014 in terms of interest income to the city. $80,000, we're earning in interest. It's significant because you look where we were in 2007. We were earning $623,000 a year in interest. So that's half a million dollars in lost revenue just because of the interest environment. Next slide. So now, just looking at our expenditures, go to the next slide because this is just easier to see it this way. You can see we've got a breakdown, 37.8% education. Employee benefits, almost 20%. That's retirement, workers' comp, payroll taxes, insurance. Public safety, 14.4%. Debt service, 7%. General government, 4.9%. Public works, 3.9%. And then you can see the smaller categories. That's sort of the current mix of how those funds are allocated. Next slide. Now, I always make this little disclaimer, especially when I'm with my colleagues on the school committee, that percentage that I showed you doesn't give you the true picture of all of the educational expenditures that we make as part of the budget. Because of course, employee benefits for the schools, which we pay out of the city side, but it goes to school employees, $8 million. Insurance, school crossing guards, which come out of the police budget, but they obviously support the school. Debt for school capital projects are paid for out of the general fund. And then there's other things. Charter school tuition for outgoing students and school choice tuition for outgoing students comes off the city's cherry sheet right out of our aid. It doesn't come out of the school budget. So if you put all those things together and add that total additional spending, it's actually more like $46,586, which represents, if you go to the next slide, 55% of our budget is spent on education-related, again, for both NPS and for Smith-Vogue. Next slide. So this is the general fund appropriation for education. This is what the city appropriates to Smith-Vocational in the dark blue at the bottom, and then NPS is in the lighter blue at the top. Again, you can see what the trend has been like over time. Significantly, I would point out for FY 2014 budget, the budget that we're in, you can see that we made some significant increases related to the override. So the increase to Smith-Vogue's budget is 6.43% and NPS, 6.27% because again, we were infusing significant funds into the NPS budget. Smith-Vogue increased its tuition, which increased its revenue and the overall appropriation. So you can see how that trend has gone in terms of the general fund appropriation for education. Next slide. This is school choice and charter school sending tuition. And this is net of the state charter tuition reimbursement. We often have been, when I show slides like this, I've been said, "Well, you have to take into a fact that you do get reimbursed for some of it." So what we've done is we've put this net of the reimbursement. So this is just showing, even after we've been reimbursed, this is how much is going out for school choice and for charter school. And you can see that it's been on a significant upward trend. And you can see that in 2014, we're, you know, $2.3 million those items represent. And so that's a significant issue for us, particularly given the number of charter schools that we have around us. And for FY 2015, the governor's, the projections, again, show another increase over what we're looking at for 2014. So that's one of our budget drivers, and it's something I know we talk about on the school committee, and it's an issue that we even talk about on the state level, but that is one of our significant budget drivers that we have to be mindful of in the years ahead. Next slide. Health insurance. Employee health insurance, this has been, again, one of the bigger cost drivers. It's a major part of that general fund budget. You know, $10 million of the current FY 2014 general fund budget. You can see the trends over time. Down below, up above gives you the real numbers. Down below gives you the percentage changes over time. You can see kind of the spikes. We did a lot of great work, 2009 through 2012, to try to keep those costs down. You know, our employees worked with us to try to keep those costs down, to make plan changes. But obviously, that's been one that's been going up. You can see the averages, the 10-year average increase of 4.8%. Over the last five years, we've been able to keep that at 2.7%. We were able to see a decrease overall from '13 to '14. Part of that is the move to the GIC, to the Group Insurance Commission. We don't see the full savings of that because for half the year of '14, we had to stay with our traditional insurance. We didn't actually move in until January 1st. So it kind of splits two fiscal years. But health insurance is obviously one of the big drivers, and we'll continue to be watching that as we try to put together this budget. Retirement assessment. This is the mandatory assessment that we pay into the North Hampton contributory retirement system. You can see that we've, you can see the increases that we've had over time. And again, that's one of those items that there's a lot of discussion about at the state level, about pensions and about other than post-employment benefits. This is again, one of the drivers that we look at very carefully. Next. Oh, yes.
Can we go back to the previous slide for a second? Why would we have such a spike in 2005? What would drive such a spike? And then if we go back to that?
Well, every couple of years, they go through a process where they reassess where, you know, what we have to do to pay into it. The other thing that's at work is the stock market, if you will. The size of the investments, how those are performing. And so often, they have to make a correction in terms of the assessment. You can actually see in 2014, we had to make a 5.8% increase, and that was largely due to the fact that when they did that reassessment, they looked at where we were in terms of the glide path to getting to a fully solvent system, and they had to, we basically had to make an increased contribution in order to get back on track to do that. So that explains some of those fluctuations.
And you know how earlier you had compared to other surrounding communities? Are our health costs in line percentage-wise with other surrounding communities roughly? I mean, do we fall, where do we fall?
I don't know that we've done a comparison of that. It's interesting. We can try to see if we can find that type of a comparison. Cities and towns, since the passage of the Health Insurance Reform Act, now have to report every year to state government what their costs are. Part of that was, I think, a way for state government to track both savings under the law, but also probably to show communities, "Why haven't you done this? Why haven't you moved into this system?" So we don't have that one, but that's a good point. We can look at that and see how we're doing. Obviously, other communities have different-sized workforces. They may not be in the GIC. They may have a different provider. We do have some of our surrounding communities that are in the Hampshire County. We do have some of our surrounding communities that are in the Hampshire County health system. I think East Hampton is in the Hampshire County health system. So see if we could figure out a way to compare apples to apples.
Thank you.
Yep. Next, next slide. This is our debt, our general fund debt expenditures. This is what we have to pay towards our debt every year. You can see how that has, how that has changed over time. 2013, I believe we're showing there that the police station came online that first year under the debt schedule. We're projecting that to go down slightly for FY2014. And that's a combination of both long-term bonds and, and shorter-term bonds. And you can barely see some red ones, those are some capital leases, but we don't actually have, I don't think, any current capital leases. That was for things like leasing an ambulance, lease to buy. Next. This is just taking a look at expenditures in, in certain budget areas. So this is public safety, police, fire, and EMS and dispatch. You can see the trends for public safety. Obviously, FY2014, you look at it and you think, wow, we must have hired, you know, 20 new officers, or we must have really made some significant increases. Part of what you're seeing there is we settled contracts retroactively in 2014 that went back several fiscal years. You may remember for the fire department, for example, it was a three-year retroactive contract plus the red. So some of what you're seeing in 2014, if you really, some of that should each be applied to 13, 12, and 11. It's just we spent it in 14, but we had to do it retroactively to cover those previous contracts. But that's sort of what our spending trends have been for, for public safety. Next. This is general government and public works. Public works is in blue, general government is in the brown. Again, just showing the, showing the trends in that particular area.
Are these in real dollars? Or these don't take into account inflation?
These are real dollars. Yeah, these are just, this is literally, if you look at our FY2005 budget, that's how much we spent for the general government category.
So if we just put this on there, inflation itself would demand, over a 10-year period, that these numbers would go up, correct?
Probably so, but obviously, we've gone, we've tried to cut, we've tried to do level-funded budgets every year in, in some cases to try to absorb those increases. And so there's been a lot of cutbacks, particularly in public works, where we've had to cut back on the number of staff that we, that we have. Next slide. This is actually snow and ice and legal, which I thought, we've talked a lot about, we've talked a lot about these accounts. Snow and ice account, which is, you know, the, the funds that we use to, to fight snowstorms when they happen. Legal budget is our city's legal expenses from year to year. And these are two of the ones that tend to be very unpredictable. Obviously, the, the snow and ice one is, is about as predictable as the weather. And so depending on the types of winters that we have, we spend more, we spend less. Legal, the same way. You can see in FY2013, we had a spike in our legal expenses. We were essentially in negotiations with all of our unions at that point. So we spent a lot more in terms of collective bargaining that year, as well as the charter change happened. And we were doing a lot of work related to the charter change, the city solicitor was involved in that. We also had the JLMC arbitration case, which was very lawyer-intensive. And so, so that just shows you that those are, we've tried very hard to use historic data to budget, to, to put more money toward those, to get out of the cycle of under-budgeting and then having to use free cash to backfill, which is again, one of the things that they looked at in our bond rating, that the fact that we've been more forward-funding those and using free cash for what it should be used for, which is not to support operations. So anyway, that's a, that's just gives you a sense of how those fluctuate from year to year. Go ahead. This is human service spending, veteran services, council on aging, board of health. Obviously, the veterans one looks like it's off the chart, but again, those are, it is, has been off the chart, but we do get reimbursed 75% for those funds in the next year. But that, the veterans budget clearly shows the increase in the number of veterans that we're serving, as the number of veterans have increased with the wars in Afghanistan and Iraq. Go to the next slide. This actually shows you that trend over that 10-year period. And the blue is actually the 75% that we get reimbursed the next year by the state. The green is actually the city's portion over time. While we do get reimbursed, we still have to budget for it in the fiscal year. We have to put up the money. So we, that's still, in 2013, we still had to budget for, you know, close to $700,000 for that line item, even though we would get reimbursed the next year. Next slide. This is culture and recreation spending. So these are our libraries, Forbes and Lilly, rec department, arts council, and then you can see First Night, which is one of our categories. And, and so this just sort of shows you the trends in terms of culture and recreation spending. In the libraries, we have a minimum contribution that the state requires us to make, which we have adhered to. And in the other areas, again, you can see we've, we've tried to make investments in those important programs, but you can see that it's been an area that's been fairly, fairly flat over time. Next slide. So, so that's sort of the, the picture in terms of where we are with the current revenues, current expenditures, some of the projections. We still have a lot of information that we're waiting on. Health insurance is one of the big numbers that we will be hearing about. The state, the GIC itself goes through a whole process every year where it sets the rates that, that the participating plans in the GIC program will charge. So we'll know those numbers. They're going to have a hearing on those various plans and rates in February, and then they set the rate early in March. So we're going to get our number for health insurance, which is a big number. I mean, that's $10 million of our budget. So, you know, a 1% increase is a million dollars there. So that's a, that's a significant increase, could be a significant increase. So we'll be watching that number. Obviously, the state aid number that I talked about, the governor has put out his budget. I can say at the MMA conference, the Speaker of the House also made an appearance. And, and he was very clear that they were committed in the House to increasing local aid, that they, they were, they were not satisfied with a level-funded local aid number. So we're hoping that between now and when we put our budget together, and I know that MMA is going to be lobbying very hard for the House and the Senate to give some kind of a number to cities and towns. At least the House budget, the House Ways and Means budget usually tends to be a really good predictor of the final number. So we're hoping we're going to get that aid number so we can plug that in. And again, this is sort of the process that we'll be using. Much of it is dictated by the charter. So January 30th is tonight. That's not, the date's not really dictated, but we start the process with this joint meeting. I've asked city departments to submit budgets to me by February 6th. And I should say that what I've asked city departments to do is actually create for me level service budgets. In past years, we've gone through the level-funded budget, which means, you know, take what you got last year and try to do everything you were doing last year with the same amount of money, which has effectively meant cuts. So what I've instructed our department heads to do is, as a baseline, is to this year work with a level service budget. So take, you know, what you're doing right now, incorporate primarily the increases in labor costs through the contracts, and give us those budgets as a starting line. We're going to be meeting with each department individually to go through their individual budgets. Obviously, some departments may have some additional adjustments that they may, may need to make, and we'll have to do those on a case-by-case basis. I will be setting up meetings with the schools, the school departments, with the superintendent and, and her budget director. Same thing with Smith-Vogue and their budget director, business manager, to go over their budgets and what we're looking at in terms of, of a projected number, as well as the libraries, which are two other of our, of our non-city systems that we have to budget with. So we'll be going through that process while we're simultaneously waiting for some more of these revenue pictures to clear up. Meantime, March 3rd, 2014, under the new charter, I'm required to submit a five-year capital improvement program to city council. That's not a funding document for them to vote on. It's basically a blueprint for the next five years of, these are the capital projects that we see over the next five years, and this is how we're going to fund them. It's a little bit of a departure from what we've done in the past, which has basically been, we're going to put up there every single project we know of in the city. We really, the, the charter now requires that we not only put it out there, what we want to do in the next five years, but how we're going to pay for it. So this is going to be a refined list of what we think we can pay for and what we plan to fund over the next five years. Obviously, we have to do this every year, so that list is going to be changing. We'll be re-updating it every year. So that's going to be another item that'll come forward. Again, this is just the plan, not the actual funding of the plan. So April 15th is the date by charter that both the schools, the public, North Hampton Public Schools and Smith-Vogue have to adopt their budgets and submit them to the mayor so that then I can begin working to incorporate them so that I can meet my, my deadline of May 15th, in which I'm required to present a proposed FY2015 budget to the city council. Then there are two important deadlines that happen for the city council. The city council, by June 1st, has to have had a public hearing and voted on that five-year capital improvement plan. That's again, by charter. And then by June 30th, I think we meant 2014 there, but it says 3014, a little typo. That's the deadline for the city council to have held a public hearing on the budget and obviously to have voted on the budget so that we can get it into place for July 1st. So that's sort of the process as it's laid out. And, and we'll obviously be trying, I'll be trying to keep both the council and the school committee apprised of new developments and obviously meeting with the superintendent to keep her apprised as we go forward. So that's the presentation for tonight, and I would just open the floor to any questions or comments that people have. Yes?
In reference to the level service budget that you've asked for for each department, I guess, is it safe to assume that the across-the-board increase would, that would be the whatever negotiated contractual raises there are for each department, that pretty much the baseline where the increase would be for a level service?
Yes. Yeah, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it. Now, there may be individual departments. As I said, when we meet with them, there may be specific needs in individual apartments. There may be, for example, a good example, you know, we'll be planning in this budget for Florence Fields coming online, which is under construction, and we will be finishing construction this year. Part of what we need to incorporate into DPW's operating budget is, you know, we're basically creating this new facility. We're, we're, I'm not doubling, but close to the number of recreation fields we have. It's a major facility, so we're going to have to figure out adding the additional resources to maintain that going forward. So there may be cases like that.
So my question then about generally, I was just asking, is there any way to give a general sense about what that across-the-board negotiated increase? I'm assuming it's in the 1% range.
For...
Just across the board. I know we have many, many different contracts.
For 14, wow.
I mean, we know it's not 5%. We know it's not 3%.
Exactly, yeah.
I'm just assuming it's somewhere in the 1% range?
I think that's probably accurate, one to...
There's steps, too.
And there's steps as well. I can get you that information?
I'm just thinking generally, just as a ballpark. So we know we're not talking 5%.
No, no, no.
We're not talking even 2%.
No.
Probably are somewhere in the 1% to 2% range.
Yeah, I don't have the chart, but I have a chart, which is, shows all the collective bargaining agreements. And I can get that to you.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, so that you can see it across the board. Yeah. Counselor Adams, and then Counselor O'Donnell.
You stated that the state's mandating we raise our contribution, $900,000 to the schools, and they're only giving us $70,000?
Yeah, and I should, and again, as I, as I preface that with, we're already making, you know, North Hampton is already above net school spending in terms of its contribution. So that's not going to affect us. There are many other communities across the state that, that are buddying up against their net school spending number, where that would have a real major impact. I was with, who was it that was really upset? Rentham, I think it was Rentham, was very upset. They were in a situation where they were right up at the, at net school spending. Their minimum contribution was going up significantly, and they were having to essentially come up with the funding to meet that, and they were really getting only a minimal amount of new chapter 78. So that's more, for us, it's, that is not as impactful because we're already above net school spending. But for a community that's on the, on the close and just, just meeting net school spending, that type of an increase could be significant. Because it basically means you have to find, you know, $900,000 out of your general fund budget to be able to, to meet that requirement. So if you look at our, our, they, basically, every community gets a sheet that gives that breakdown. It talks about what their foundation budget is, what their minimum requirement is, what their aid structure is, and it gives all those numbers. It's on the DORR website. We can send a link out about that. But that's what I was referring to. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor O'Donnell.
So FY15 will be the first full year of the new health insurance program.
That's correct.
I don't remember if your slide showed this or not, but would you expect there to be a, a total decrease for our expenditures in healthcare? Or is there still kind of a naturally occurring increase that would put us over what it has been for FY14?
We, we, we think that there will, well, part of what we see, too, is we were, when we projected the savings, which is what the GI, what, what the health reform law uses to calculate the savings from going into that system, they look at what you were paying under your old plan versus what the, what the year for the next plan would be. We, we do then have the actual moving into the plan, and people then actually making decisions about, you know, I'm going to go into Health New England, or I'm going to go to Fallon, or I'm going to go to whatever. And then, of course, we have new employees come on, we have new people. So those numbers may not track exactly. We are going to see, we will see probably a slight increase, but we won't really know for sure until we get that rate on March 3rd. But the goal, I mean, we had projected, for example, you know, we were projecting about a 3% increase in some of our long-term planning, just as a natural increase that would occur in healthcare. I don't think we thought we'd be at level funding, but, but that's what we were projecting, and now we'll have to wait to see what the rate increases are.
But certainly, any increase is much less than it would have been had you not made this one change.
Exactly, exactly. And again, we were looking last year at an initial quote that was going to be 7, 8% increase. So it was a significant savings to move into the GIC program. Did you want to add anything to that, Susan?
We also have to budget for the mitigation fund.
And that's the other piece of it, is that part of the savings under the health, under the Health Reform Act, we have to say, share a percentage of the savings with employees. So part of the bargaining that, with the, with the unions that I did to move into that was, we also had to take a percentage of the savings, put it into a mitigation fund, and we share that savings with the employees, both employees and retirees. So that's, also cuts into some of the savings that we have to account for.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Counselor Dwight?
On your graph that showed the growth based on, on, for 2014, is that based on permits that have been taken out, or would you project may be taken out on the...
It's, it's, it's actually, it's sort of like on July 1st, it's, it's any new growth that's, that's occurring in the city. And so, you know, Joan and Joe calculate that, new properties that have changed hands. They do look at permits that have been pulled for things that are under construction, and then they do a, a calculation about how much that actually will add to, to the base. And so, you know, they had projected a number. It actually came in much higher after the state did that. And actually, the difference closed out to our free cash balance. It was about $200,000 difference, so that closed out to free cash. So...
Because as it compared to 2013, there was a, there was a drop. And so, to answer my question, that, that it's entirely possible that the, in the end, that number may even reflect higher revenue generation from the growth.
Possible, yeah, yeah. So again, that's a number that, you know, you may have a project that starts in one year, that finishes in one year. You know, you've got the Round Hill Road, Clark School, which is factored in. which is factored in, just the sale of the land, the base sale of the land got added to our new growth, but as the apartments get built out and start generating income, that will increase their contribution to the tax base as well. So this July 1st, there'll probably be another, you know, impact in that regard. So, so, yeah, it's, but, but again, the idea, the goal is to see that new growth number go up, because other than that 2.5% each year, the only other thing we get to add to the 2.5% is new growth.
Well, is the reason I asked, because we more encouraging realize that that could still improve, and that would indicate a more hopeful trend, as opposed to one that indicated that it was on, it was declining from previous year.
Yeah, yeah. Counselor?
The meals tax revenue went down for the first time in any of the previous years. Is that right?
Our estimate for 2014...
I think what you were seeing was our estimate for 2014 was probably a little more conservative. So you probably were seeing the 2014, that wasn't the real, that was the estimated. So that may have been what you saw. Yeah, I think 2014 is asterisked, so that's our, that's what we used as an estimate, and we had to set that, you know, back in, you know, March, April of, of this year. And so we set that as our estimate. Obviously, 13, I think, came in slightly above estimate, a little bit above estimate. That was part of our free cash. So, so, you know, we hope 14 comes in where we budgeted it, obviously, but, but we suspect it's going to follow the trend of continuing to be a little bit higher. Yes, Counselor Murphy?
But that's based on, what, about 3/4 of a percent?
Yeah, 0.75.
So the state makes like $5 million out of Northampton on this thing?
That's correct, yes.
I mean, they split hotel motel with us pretty evenly, but not so with meals.
Yeah, and that's exactly, that's a very good point, and I know you made it before, and...
It's a good one to think about. Pet loser on state aid, but they're still taking $5 million out of here every year on meals tax.
Exactly. So that's locally generated revenue, we get to keep 0.75% of it, an additional 0.75 that we voted to add on. So that's a perfect example of, it would be great to have more local revenue sources...
They split that even with us.
Yeah, exactly.
A big override for us.
Yes, it would be, yes, it would be, but it would be a big, they'd need to do something. They'd have to have a tag sale, which would be a bad thing. Okay, other questions?
I just wanted to add, the first two quarters for this fiscal year for hotel, motel, and meals have been almost identical to last year. So I would say we're going to end up in 14 earning just about what we did in 12 and 13, which were identical, so it looks like...
I mean, the other thing to note, again, getting back to the new growth, if you've driven down Conne Street lately, you'll see there's three stories of 108-room hotel coming online. So that's going to be 108 additional hotel rooms, that's going to continue, that's going to generate more local revenue, hopefully. So, so that's a twofer. We're getting new growth to the tax base, but also another potential source of that hotel motel tax. Other questions or comments about the process, or, or just any other general questions?
You and I talked this morning about how Hilltown Charter is going to be, because they're going to expand their middle school. Can that be, do you put that into the projection, something like that, where there's potential for more children from Northampton to go? Is there a way to calculate that?
That's a good question. I mean, they're going to be, they're going to be moving, and I think they're opening, are they planning to open this next coming school year? Yes. And so, so that's going to be one of those things we're going to have to look at. I think we're going to have to try to, will DOR be giving us an estimate based on those new seats, or...
They, when they give us the cherry sheet, they give us an estimate of charter and outgoing school choice. And each time the House does the budget, then the Senate does the budget, that number changes based on what they have for enrollment.
Yeah.
So we always go with those numbers. We don't make another leap that says, we think more people are going to go. We just suck it up, or, or whatever, so we just...
But that's a valid concern. If there's, if there's going to be additional seats opening at the school, which is going to be even closer to us, a school that already, the majority, the vast majority of its students come from Northampton, that is a concern. And I know that's a concern. Please, Lieutenant Nash expressed in writing to the Department of Education when they asked for our opinion about the siting of the school so close to, to Northampton.
And as usual, they listened to it.
Yeah, they listened, yes. You were polite, I don't think Mayor Towson was very polite about it. He was very blunt about his not wanting that school to be located in East Hampton, as well as in his industrial park in a parcel that was a taxable parcel, that's now going to be a non-taxable parcel. So, so that's going to be a growing concern, and, and I realize this can be, you know, can be a third rail issue of sorts, because we have a lot of families in Northampton that choose to go to charter schools, and so we obviously have to be respectful of those families and their choices, but the funding structure remains problematic, in my view. And it's something that I think we need to have a conversation about, particularly at the state level, just about the structure of it. Because again, that, well, that's not the slide, but, you know, 2 point, whatever million it is, that's coming, you know, off of our budget, has a significant impact. It has a significant impact citywide, and also what we're able to fund into our own schools. Yes?
Well, just, just building on that, on that question and this topic, you were at the MMA conference this weekend, and you must have heard cities and towns clamoring for more local aid. Do you feel that there's the same sense of urgency in terms of changing possibly payment formula for, for school?
For charter schools.
Yeah, for charter schools. Is there that sense statewide?
It's different, because really, because not all 351 cities and towns are affected that equally, because you have to have charter schools near you. You know, you have to have, you know, like, for example, us, we have, you know, we have them all around us, whereas other mayors that I talk to, they, they may not have any charter schools. I mean, the mayor of Boston, you know, I talked to the mayor of Boston, he's probably got some issues around charter school funding, but there are many communities that this is not even an issue. And, and I know that's, you know, that's one of the things that the Mass Association of School Committees has put forward as a policy idea, is that because these are state-chartered schools, the idea that they've put forward is they should be funded with their own Chapter 70 allotment. Each school should have its own Chapter 70 allotment, which means that the funding stream would be shared on a statewide, would come out of the statewide budget. So it would be spread across all 351 cities and towns. Obviously, that would then put those schools on the same footing somewhat with schools like ours, which means that we, they would be at the whim of the funding cycle of the budget, and, and Chapter 70 levels, and all those kinds of things. So there's not a big appetite within the charter school community to do that, as you can imagine. But that's, that's sort of one of the alternatives that's been talked about, and there's bills filed every year to do it, and I don't know what the prospects are. Yeah.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you.
I didn't see a slide that broke down our charter costs and our school choice sending and receiving tuitions. Where, where does that lie? Because I know for a while, we actually did okay on that.
We do okay, we definitely do okay on the choice. We definitely, it's a revenue maker for us. We make out in the transaction there, we, we take in more students than we send out.
But I mean, on the city side, we don't, don't really see the final math for that. We have charter out, we have sending out, and we have choice in. We used to do okay when those three things were considered together.
Yeah.
Where are we now? Because that's something we don't always see in the system.
It's about, we're, we're losing by about a million.
What's about a million?
Yeah, because some choice coming in is about 1.4.
Between 1.1 and 1.4 is, is the choice in, and we have about 400,000 going out on choice out, and netting those against charter gets you to your number.
Yeah, because we used to be, it used to be a lot more favorable, it's going, going the other way now.
Well, that's, I think we, we didn't have...
As many charters.
As many charters. So with the growth of charters, and more kids going to charters...
And reimbursement has been reduced, right, in the last few years?
The, the formula for that has, has not been fully funded. The, the full vision of the law has not been fully funded.
Well, and it's, it's declining, so you get some reimbursement for the first couple of years that the student goes, and then you're basically not getting anything.
Yeah.
So it's, it helps you upfront when they initially leave to go to a charter, but then it takes us up.
Any other question? Yes?
Yes, Mayor. I've received several calls within the past three days. The situation of the consultant being hired for the busing, has anybody heard anything about the report?
Yeah.
We expect a report in 30 to 60 days.
Yeah, and I think, and I just want to be clear that it's, well, the newspaper framed it as a consultant that was being brought in to study the bus system. It's actually, we're, we're paying the vendor for our proprietary software that we use to do our bus system, to essentially try to reprogram their software, to reprogram their software, to see if they can make a new hub system work. So I just wanted to clarify what that was. That's what that expenditure was for. So, but that's what's happening, and we don't have that back yet. So, Mr. Ball?
Well, I would just like to urge Councilor DeBarge to, you know, pass that information, or the constituents to tell them to, you know, talk to the at-large, or talk to their school committee representative, like Ms. Mandy, so, because she hasn't been receiving the phone calls, and, and I just think, just to direct him would be a suggestion.
Counselor Dwight?
I just want to say, as we've seen you sum up, that despite everything that you described, we've been in much, we've had much dire meaning, more dire meanings than we've experienced tonight. And so I want to give you your due, and Susan Wright's due, for creating this stability. You have, you have long-term contracts, which give you the flexibility to project out and to move within the system. There is no override or pending, we're not backed up against the same wall that we were before the citizens decided that it was important to reinvest in the community. That's translated into this stability that you described tonight, and also the, maintaining the bond rating, and our ability to continue to provide services even at a, at a moderate level. We're not, we're not Long Meadow, but then, of course, Long Meadow has a 23% tax rate. So, and, and by the way, a cursory glance puts us smack dab in the middle of the state for tax rates, as I looked up on that. Long Meadow is the highest, but that on some level makes sense, I suppose. So I'm just, I'm thanking you for the fact that I get to sleep a little better after this meeting, as opposed to the one similar that we experienced last year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sleep tight.
And I want to comment on the role that new growth has played, particularly on the commercial side.
Yeah.
You talked about the, the new hotel, which is the gift that keeps on giving, because you get property taxes, meals taxes, you get room taxes, I mean, that's about the best thing you can do.
And we're trying to get them a liquor license, so they can...
Get some even more taxes out.
Additional taxes.
You get thirsty, you get hungry, and it's good for us. But on the other side, there are still things in the chain. I mean, you were talking about what our new growth has been in the last two years, and that's substantial, because unlike state aid that comes and goes, you know, that's the gift that keeps on giving. That's ours, it pays every year.
It's built into the base.
And it continues to subsidize us. And the, and the, the new growth number that was up there is the taxes on the growth, that's not the dollar value of the growth, that's the tax dollars generated by the growth. So the growth has been substantial, and there's, you know, a couple of car dealers in the pipeline, there's a hotel in the pipeline, there's audit, and it's coming. So that, that is an important component of our revenue, and that's revenue that people can't take away from us. We get that every year. So new growth is our friend, especially on the commercial side.
And then also, when we see that increase on the commercial side, it takes pressure off the residential side, from the overall levy, and what we have to, how we apportion those taxes out to all taxpayers. So that's the other benefit of having growth on the commercial side. Counselor Carter?
Just to, I think I'm correct in saying this is the first time in a while that a mayor has suggested to department heads to not, not submit a level-funded budget, but a level-service budget, and that's, I, I would imagine it's a relief to most of those department heads to be able to at least know that they can offer or provide to you a budget that shows the same amount of services rather than what would be necessarily cuts. And while there's always room for improvement and room to, to grow, the, the fact of being able to at least know that they may not be facing serious cuts in each department, again, is just a great relief to all of us here, I'm sure.
Definitely, and obviously, thank you to the, to the voters and the residents, because that, they obviously played a major role in that in terms of the override, so, yeah. Other comments or questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this joint meeting of the city.
Okay, seconded.
Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded. All those in favor of adjourning this joint meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting is adjourned, thank you.